I'd like to call to order the Smart Planet Commission for May 2019. And at this time, would ask that everyone stand for prayer and pledge, please.
Trey.
Let's pray. The Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that we have in this community in which we all live. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here in the open, to discuss the town's business, give us guidance as we deliberate what is best for our town. We ask that you watch over us, watch over our policemen and our firefighters and those that protect us, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No citizens' comments at this time?
That's correct.
Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on, item number five, new business, a rezoning. Villas of Stewart's Borough, staff comments?
This is a rezoning request, R1 to PRD. It is 3.03 acres, currently zoned R1. Proposal is to zone it to a PRD for 35 townhouse units. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and PRD, which is Phase 1 of this development. Landing plan would support commercial development in this area. This is, does fall within CUD's service area for water. This is a development that you all have seen a couple of times. This is a reduction in the number of units. The last time you looked at it, it was 40. This is, as I said, 35. The layout is, and proposed units and all that is essentially the same as what was looked at before, other than just, they did reduce the number of units.
Does that reduce the building, or just the number of units?
It actually reduced the building as well. As far as the, when we say reduce the building, as far as, yeah, the total area is changing because there's fewer units, but the units are still the same square footage.
Okay.
As far as in each individual unit. Still the 1,700 square foot minimum living area. They all do have a one-car garage. They all have two parking spaces in front of each unit, in addition to the garage, as well as some additional parking.
And it still has the additional parking, which can be used for the section beside it, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, this would be a Phase 2 of the same development, so it would be part of all, be jointly developed as far as an HOA and all that. And so, all units could use all the various amenity packages and parking and all that.
Essentially, same thing we approved at 40 units.
Yes, sir.
Just fewer number.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions? Have a motion.
I move we approve.
Have a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve or recommend the PRD to council. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business, item B, preliminary plat, Sundell subdivision, Section 2. Staff comments?
This is Section 2 of the Sundell development, which is west of Rocky Fork Road, south of the new schools. This is, has been, was rezoned a few months ago to, from R3 to the PRD. This is 17.86 acres. There's 47 lots in this, this phase, this section. We had a few comments. The first three are very standard comments. Number four, we did ask them, and they have agreed to this, they did not submit revised plans. There was a one or two sewer lines that they had shown that were outside the rideaway that do need to be shown within an actual easement. They didn't have an easement on those. So, we'll need to look at that. So, those four conditions would need to be placed on any approval. This is consistent with the PUD plan that was approved, when the PRD was approved from the R3 zone. So, that's all that I've got.
How many lots were in first phase? Can't remember.
Yeah, I can't recall off the head either.
About the same size?
It was roughly the same size. I can't remember the exact, yeah, the exact number.
That's an odd. Okay.
Phase 1 is, is under construction, as far as the infrastructure part of it. There's no houses yet.
Any other questions concerning this? Everything in keeping with the PRD as was approved, correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. New business, under number five, final plat, Ashley Grove Apartments. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is a plat for Ashley Grove Apartments, which is at 417 Union Springs Road East. Property is zoned R6, 12.01 acres. Basically, taking this and dividing it into two lots. It's an odd subdivision. And with Lot 1, that the proposed Lot 1 would not have any road frontage. They are showing a 50-foot access easement through Lot 2 to get to Lot 1. And talking with the owner, I think it's, this is kind of being done, they are looking at developing Lot 1. And this is really kind of a, for financial, for the financing, future financing of that new development, I think, is part of what they're looking at, or why they wanted to do this division. So, eventually, this may go away and get combined back together. They did address, we had two comments regarding the access easement. The original width was only 25, and subdivision regulations do require 50, so they have corrected that. And then Lot 2, which is where all the existing units are, the proposal, proposed lot size was not large enough to meet the density requirements of R6, and so they did enlarge that. So, that, that issue has been addressed as well. So, we don't have any additional comments.
So, that, number 2 has been addressed, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's probably the biggest one, then. So, did you say one had been addressed also?
Yes, sir.
So, we actually don't have any comments on this?
We don't have any comments, no, sir.
You all have questions on this? By doing this, we really don't increase the density or anything for what it's already zoned for and approved for, or anything, do we?
No.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll move we approve.
Have a second. Okay. There was hesitation. Are there questions? All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business, final plat, number 2, Cantrell Farms, Section 2. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is Section 2 of the Cantrell Farms developments, is in the PRD zone, as part of the overall Cantrell Farms PRD. 7.31 acres, 44 lots. This is the townhome, or part of the townhome portion of the development, is what has been approved, previously approved on a site plan. Do have a few comments. One, but still need to be addressed regarding adding signatures. And then, they still need to show all the street name labels and the approval from 911 for that. Number three, regarding the US Postal Service delivery, has been, is shown and has been laid out on the plat, so we can remove comment number three.
Okay.
So, and...
One and two, are all that's left?
Yes, sir.
And everything is in line with the PRD that was approved?
Yes, sir, and as well as the site plan that was submitted and approved a few months ago, as these are townhouse units.
The, the rest that's reserved for future development, is that part of the townhouse project that's in that PRD also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business, number 3, final plat, Sean Collins, Rocky Fork Road. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is a plat, which typically, something like this is one we review administratively, but because it is on septic, it is required to be reviewed by the planning commission and as well as, as the council, per our subdivision regulations. Property is zoned R3. Originally was submitted as a one-lot subdivision, and they have basically, there's two separate tracts of land, and they're kind of combining those, part of what's remaining of one of those with the other one, and to create a lot of about 10.29 acres. And then, you have the existing house on the two acres, which is the one new, specifically new subdivision lot that's being created. We had a few comments. Comment number one, they have added the surveyor's signature and stamp, but we still do need the owner and CUD, as well as T-Dax signature for the septic tank approval. We had, and again, number two has been addressed regarding the surveyor's stamp, and they did correct the road name, so number three has been addressed. Number four, the existing, and this is an existing situation, the fill lines for Lot 1 are actually partially on the adjoining property. And we feel like this will be the time to, to correct that, as, before, you know, the property gets sold again. So, we recommended that they move that line for Lot 1 a little bit to the east to, to correct that issue. So, we, we still need to keep that comment. Number five was really an informational comment for them regarding the approval process. And then, number six, the first couple sentences of that has been addressed with this, including all the property is, is a Lot 2 there. And then, they do need to, the last part of that was, would regard, again, moving that lot line to accommodate the field lines, all being on one lot. So, we'll keep the last piece of comment number six.
So, the fill lines you're referring to are the fill lines for the existing house on Lot 1?
Correct.
And I assume the existing house on Lot 2, the fill lines are where the...
The sole side, on the opposite side of the house.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So, that's, that part's not an issue, it's just this Lot 1 piece of it.
Now, we refer this on to council? Is that the process?
Yes, sir. Any development utilizing septic is required to go to council as well.
So, are we approving subject to council approval? Or we are recommending? What, what is our, what is our process?
You would be approving it and then recommending it to council as well. Technically, it's, this is a subdivision, you do need to be approving it. And then, just recommending the council approve it as well. And sewer is not available here yet. It is in the neighborhood, and it will be eventually, but right now, it's not available.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve, with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any other discussions or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business, item D, concept plan. Tell us what we got, Kevin.
Yeah, the concept plan is approximately one acre total between the two parcels, located on New Nashville Highway. These are the first two parcels as you enter into town limits from Murphysboro. Plans show proposed building space of 9,200 square feet. Property is currently zoned C2, and the proposed uses for a flooring, sales shop, and a stock warehouse for their product. This is law by right in the C2 zoning district as well. Property is bound to the north by vacant land, to the east by storage complex, to the south by Murphysboro, and to the west by New Nashville Highway. Surrounding zoning consists of PUD, C2, and CH Commercial Highway District in Murphysboro. As proposed, the site may be accessed from New Nashville Highway. So, as far as the elevations are concerned, the applicant is requesting that the, the use of metal on the warehouse storage portion of the building, which is the back part of it, there's three sides for the rear and the sides of that warehouse storage, and on the front portion of the building be used of brick and hardy board material. So, that's mainly what they're looking at here, getting approved, and see your thoughts on that whole process of the materials to be used. Couple standard comments and staff comments as well. Staff comment, one, to meet designer review requirements, as the metal building is not typically allowed in this type of a dis, development. Then, staff comment, two, the access to New Nashville Highway would also be subject to TDOT approval. And that is all we have.
Typically, this is something that's a little different. You all usually don't see concept plans. This is a, a little bit, it's not unusual, I guess it is somewhat unusual, but it's, it's something that essentially is, without, for someone, the developer doesn't have to go through and to the time and the expense of actually doing a full site plan, if it's something a little different, that they want to kind of see planning commission input on something, and before they go through the process of doing all that, and they can see how you feel about something, or whatever. And so, basically, that's what they've done. This is really just a concept plan, and if you all approve it, or deny, whichever route you go, they could still come back to you with a site plan that meets whatever your thoughts are on the concept plan, with a full, you know, drainage plan and, and all that. They haven't done that to this point, this is just a concept plan, primarily to address the materials that they're wanting to use on the building.
Is there someone here representing the applicant? Could you please come forward and give your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, Jerome Dempsey, 1009 Rosemont Terrace, Dempsey Dilling Associates. What he's wanting to do, he has an existing building on Lowry Street, next to Harts Branch. If you're going towards Laverne, as soon as you cross Harts Branch, he's on the left-hand side, B&amp;B Flooring. And what he's wanting to do is construct his own building, so he's able to locate these two lots to combine them in town. And, and I get it, with the, the metal being viewed from arterial road, what we've tried to do, I don't know if you have the elevation views in your packet, what he has tried to do is really dress the front up with brick and glass. That's going to be like a showroom. And if you can see, the, the actual front showroom extends down the side about 40 feet before we get into the metal building, where he's going to store his flooring and his carpet and those products. And I'd like to go back to the aerial map as well. And if you're coming north, if you're traveling north from Murphysboro, right adjacent to the property are two mobile homes that sit there. Behind the property are mini warehouses or storage units with, as you can see, a lot of construction equipment and items stored behind it. Also, across the street are, are the, the residential houses that, I don't want to say too much, you know, on, on public television, but could use some maintenance. And I have brought some photos of the buildings in the area. If I could let you guys pass these around, or to take a view?
It'll be fine.
One thing I wanted to point out on the aerial map is there's a tree line on the southern property line, adjacent to the two mobile homes. That provides probably total screening for the south side of the metal. On the north side of the rear portion of the building, the showroom extends out further, so that if you're traveling down New Nashville Highway, that it provides somewhat of a screen there. But what the owner's proposed, is there a way to provide some additional landscaping on that side to, I guess, shade the long wall of the metal. He's also incorporated what I call false windows along that side, if you'll look at the elevation views, to try to break up that long wall. And Kevin, I took the privilege of pulling out the design review, and please don't take this the wrong way, I'm just, you know, doing my job.
Sure, I understand.
Part of the design review says, you know, kind of retain existing trees, which he wants to do. And it also says, "In most cases, buildings are not viewed in isolation, but rather in the context of other buildings. While architectural style may vary, buildings of a proposed development shall be compatible with surrounding buildings. With regard to mass, massing scale, proportion of openings, roof types, types of glazed openings, and detail, and degree of detail. The use of materials and colors compatible with buildings adjacent to a site is required." So, I, I get that there's metals not accepted, or, or standard block. What he's trying to do is improve the area. I think this building will be a mass improvement to that area and other buildings. So, we're just asking, you know, for consideration of this, and that's why we came before you with the concept plan. And I'd like the owner to kind of describe a little bit about his business.
Please give your name and address, please, sir. Yes, sir. My name is Barry Bryant. I am the owner of B&amp;B Flooring. And we have been in the area since late 2017. And actually love it up here, and everything's been working very well. So, we found this piece of property and wanted to spread our wings and build here. So, we got started trying to get a plan together and try to come up with a scheme, so financially, our company can build it without shooting ourselves in the foot, per se, before we actually get off, you know, get everything going. So, if we, if we can get away from doing too much in the warehouse, far as deciding, and spin it toward the front of the building, so it will allow us financially, but to build the building, would be very helpful to us, and I think it would do a lot for the community. We, at this point, we have five residents working for our company from this area, and hoping to employ several more, if we can make this happen.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing, Chairman, if I could. He, he found this property because it's really close to 840. That's going to help his business as far as bringing product, where it won't have to come all the way through town to get to his new business.
And, all right, you're showing the overhead doors on, I guess, the north side of the building?
South side.
It's on the south side.
Yes.
Yes.
Where the tree line is.
And with a lot of open area on the, on the north side?
Correct.
Why is that?
Well, what he, as far as...
Is that where the septic's?
Yeah, there's septic fill over there. And, you know, we proposed to put some landscaping there, but it's going to have to be selective locations because of the soil fills.
But it could be up against the building, or up against property line, either way.
Right, right. And then, again, we did try to add some kind of architectural character to it with the false windows. You know, there's not, you know, we talked to his builder about the vertical pilasters, and he said it'd be difficult to attach it to that product. We also investigated the EFS panels to see how it would play out cost-wise. So, it is economic situation. You know, it's, it's something that we haven't just come in here and says, hey, we'd like an exception, we've, we've looked at the other alternatives. We, we think it'll be improvement to the area. And I know you guys got, you know, the design review to go by, but from me reading the design review, I, I think it kind of gives you guys, you know, the ability to review it site by site.
Okay.
Is there, is there growth potential with the site? Or are you kind of boxed in with what you can do?
I think that's, that's the extent of the square footage that he'll be able to put there.
The only way I think that there would ever be any growth potential on this, kind of the little vacant square, is if sewer ever becomes available. Right now, that's where they're, it's still on a septic system. That's where all that is, and that's going to prevent anything being done there for, I think, the foreseeable future.
And that's part of the large cost on this site, is providing a sewer system as well.
Just for a little bit of an update, in, in the rear of it is a mini warehouse facility, which was approved in the county before it was ever annexed into the, the city. I have been out to this site to look at it, and directly in behind it is really more of a open area, a storage area, not even the mini warehouses, as you can see from the, from the overhead. And certainly, our property line, I mean, the city limits sign is right up against this property. We didn't necessarily have anything to say about what's beside it. Does the front meet design review? Does everything in the front and the warehouse meet design review?
Yeah, the entire front piece of this building, the 40 by 95, basically, area in the front, does. And then, the front of the warehouse, which a little bit will extend above where the, that front piece of the building is, is hardy siding on the front of the warehouse. It's just the side of the warehouse. It's just the side of the warehouse, the two sides, and then the back is where the metal's proposed.
Kevin, did we do something similar as far as an approval? And, and I'm thinking of the, uh, place that was the recycle center originally on Amble Road where we had an arterial there and we were concerned about, uh, brick and/or screening so that we had, you know, the brick or screening so that it wasn't, metal wasn't visible from the roadway.
Yeah, it basically went on the side, or the front, flash side of the building, uh, facing Amble Road, and then it went around a certain length. I can't remember the exact feet each foot, but it went down each side some feet.
Do you see this area developing out into a commercial retail restaurant, uh, I guess, something that you would see on a Sam Ridley? Or, or do you think it's gonna continue for a while where it, to me, it has more of a industrial look through that area?
Or a showroom warehouse combination type thing, which is what this is?
Yeah, I think you're gonna, it'll be something more like that because there is no sewer out there, and so I think you're, you're limited more. You can't have something with a lot of employees or have something with a lot of, you know, water use, like a restaurant or something would be pretty difficult to do something like that out there. Plus, and, you know, I think you're gonna continue to see something like this, something like the many storage units.
Don't we have a couple of, uh, trucking companies somewhere around?
Um, you do have some, they're a little bit closer to town, you do.
Okay.
And then you've got, you know, you've got some car lots out there. You've got the US Mail delivery guy that's out there.
I think you're talking about the trucking.
That's what I'm thinking of. Okay.
It's next to the cemetery.
Yeah, okay.
And then, uh, there's a couple of other, uh, warehouse. There's like a, a section of about four different warehouses that were done in the county at the time.
Yeah, there's some, there's, there's several.
Block buildings.
Mix of those type of uses, you know, a lot of block buildings. There's car repair businesses out there. Most of, most of what's out there was in the county before. Uh, there's not been a lot of development in Smyrna in that area since it was annexed in the mid nineties, I think. Uh, there's been a little bit, but not a lot.
Um, this is gonna sound kinda odd coming from me.
Okay.
Well, let's hear it then.
Um, 'cause I've been kind of the ringleader of the, we need to upgrade and brick and... I think the brick on the front is a good start, you know, from where it sits. And I've, too, I drive by this every day. Um, and I've thought about the dreaded word that I do not like, which is ephes. But I don't think ephes is the right material for this particular application. Um, I'm okay with the metal on the back that faces the mini warehouse. Um, if we were to think about potentially allowing the metal on the side because of where it is and what it is and everything that is around it, I would request some type of architectural, every so often we add in some color of some kind to break it up so that it's not just a long color, you know, just a bland crane color, a bland gray, something. If we added some color to it in some type of pattern, um, based on where it is and if it, if they get their screening correctly with the trees and the landscape buffer, I think it could fit and we can maybe meet somewhere in the middle for all of us. I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
Okay.
Thank you. Not all that far out.
Well, for me, well, I'm stretching a little bit.
Little bit.
Other discussion, other thoughts. One, I definitely think we would want the fentrals essentially left alone 'cause I think they provide as, as good a screening as we could ever hope to get.
And then adding something on that side like they were talking about on the, like I said, where the, the Smyrna side of the building, you know, where there isn't really any landscaping there now.
Right.
You know.
Something with some extra height, something a little more than what we would normally require.
Yeah, 'cause you do have commercial property next door. It wouldn't require a buffer necessarily typically, you know, 'cause you do have, it is commercial property next door. But put something there that, like they were talking about, some sort of landscaping on that side of the building.
You can do Leland Cypress. They're fairly inexpensive. They grow together pretty good. Make, they're an evergreen, stay green year-round. They're fairly... I don't wanna use the term inexpensive 'cause nothing's inexpensive anymore, but, but it would also help that-
Something with some height.
It does. Height, and they grow together.
Yes.
And, and that may help camouflage the metal if we were to go that, agree to go that route.
The building being offset to one side, is that because of fill lines where it's not even to the front building? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Basically, the building's set where it has to be and is determined by the fill lines. Is that correct?
Obviously, the access point is a T-DOT reviewed thing that hasn't been approved yet. So that could change things a little bit, but I think the, the building is pretty much gonna have to be where it is. It might change your access point depending.
You know, even if it was at the other end, you know, on the-
It, it, it could, yeah, it's not gonna be that big a deal as far as the layout of the property.
It would be a little bit bigger deal as far as being able to pull in there with your delivery trucks and, and on the side where the, uh, your overhead doors are.
And this isn't, it's not a limited access road or anything like that, so it may not be a big of an issue. They may be happy with what it's at. It's not like there's one immediately adjacent to it or anything like that, so.
Another question, deliveries. Do y'all have eighteen-wheelers now? Or how do y'all get your product?
Yes, sir. We do take deliveries by eighteen-wheelers.
How do they deliver now? They sit out in the middle of Murfreesboro Road or are they able to get over on the parking lot?
They actually pull parallel with the building in the parking lot. So it's not been an issue yet.
Here, they'd be able to pull in and then back into the warehouse area?
Correct. To be able to get home out of sight, actually, between the trees and the building.
Yeah, 'cause I know some on, right now, Murfreesboro Road, they just park in the middle of Murfreesboro Road and unload, so. I, I, I thought you had enough room where you were currently located for them to do that. I didn't know how would it encroach on the building next door. But this would definitely get them off the road, have enough area to get them in and get them backed in without sitting out on the middle of the road or in the road trying to back up, so.
Kevin, what's appropriate for us here? Do we take some kind of action?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
In other words, uh, if we so chose to approve it based on some of our comments, the enhanced screening and how, how do we, how would we word it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, just it would, it would be unapproved just like you would if it were a site plan as far as an approval with conditions. And we, and, and they'll have to come back to you with a complete site plan. But they, uh, this was just mainly they wanna get, mainly your comments on the building itself so they, before they spent the money that it would take to do the full grading design and all that. So I think the, you, you know, the process would be you would, if you wanted to approve it, would be to approve it with conditions, which would be basically, you know, just the first three are standard stuff, number four, or I'm sorry, number five regarding access. And that you, you know, you're so inclined to approve the building as it's submitted with, you know, additional screening on the, the north side of the property.
Non-disturbance of the fentrals.
Non-disturbance of the fentrals, additional screening, uh, landscape screening, uh, of an evergreen nature or something like that on the north side. And-
And, uh, see if you can come up with something as, uh, uh, that Trey mentioned. Anything that breaks up that side, I think, would, would help.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily on a color for a metal. It's some type of, just break it up.
Yeah, I totally understand and I agree, you know? And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll go back to the architect and see what he can do and, and as far as breaking up, you know, one solid color.
And, and to be perfectly honest with you, as you mentioned, if this was a solid brick wall, I think what we're talking about, even though it's metal with the additional attention, uh, that, that we're asking that you address it and the additional landscaping, I think it looks better than if it's a solid block, uh, brick wall with, with no breakup at all and would meet our design review. We wouldn't really have anything to say about it. I think it can be better.
Kind of a win-win.
Yes, and it's much improvement for the area. Do I have a motion for, uh, concerning this project?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I, I'm comfortable with it. And, you know, we may have, somebody may have mentioned it, but I think with the front of the building offset like that, that's even gonna make it less obvious.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that, um, we approve the concept with the comment, with the staff comments.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other discussion? On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. And I appreciate you bringing it to us. This is, I think, a, a better way of looking at this one. Thank you.
Thank you all, and we'll, we'll come back with a good, good plan.
All right. Uh, under new business, item E, site plans, uh, Ascend Federal Credit Union.
This is for a, uh, complete remodel, demolition, and rebuild of the existing Federal Credit Union on Nissan Drive at seven sixty-nine. Um, property zone C two, and they're just reusing it, same thing for a financial institution. So no, the use does not change. They plan on utilizing the existing drive off of Nissan Drive, and they would be adding a second access to the property from the rear road, which is currently a private drive. Proposed square footage vehicle or use area, twenty-four thousand five hundred and ten square feet. Required open space landscaping, two thousand four hundred and fifty-one square feet. They're proposing for three thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet. Required parking spaces of twenty-five. They're showing thirty-two with two required handicap spaces, and they are showing those two as well. Landscape plan's been submitted by the applicant, shows street trees planted along Nissan Drive and other trees that are planted throughout the development as well. Shrubs are sho- shown to be planted in landscape islands and around the perimeter of the building as well. Architecture elevations show primary material to be used of brick and ephes with glass windows around the front entry of the building. Future land use plan identifies land as the proposed site suitable for commercial development. We have one staff comment regarding that private drive in the back of the building. The existing private access road to Enin Springs Road needs, needs to be maintained. The four property owners should organize to allow for this to happen. Staff is concerned about an additional access to its current state of repair. Please evaluate private access road to determine if it needs structural repairs or milling and resurfacing. Staff would recommend approval with the comments.
Does that mean we're requiring them to do something? We're asking them to do something? What does, what exactly?
Yeah, we're asking them to look at it and, and, and determine if it needs any kind of structural repairs or milling and resurfacing. It's in pretty bad shape. It is a private road. It provides access to four tracts of land. Uh, it was not required to be extended when O'Reilly built, so it doesn't really provide any access to that building. But this one and the three that are south of it, um, it does provide access to the rear. And it is a private access easement. It's not something the city has any say-so in maintenance as far as doing any maintenance on it. And from driving on it and seeing it, it doesn't look like it's had a whole lot of maintenance through the years. And so that's our main concern. You're adding another access. You know, currently the, the drive-through lanes on the existing building, which is on, it's not on the, the screen there, but it's a sheet, I think it's zero point two, I believe, kinda shows the existing building. The driveway, there's only one driveway in and out now, and the, the drive-through lanes actually kinda pushes people back towards Nissan and all that currently. But this is gonna pretty much force drive-through lanes to be, uh, coming out on that roadway. Uh, you know, and it's, it's just not in, in decent enough shape really, you know, to provide, to have all that additional traffic on it. So that's our, was our concern. As far as, yeah, we're, we're requiring them, we're, we're... In my opinion, we're requiring them to at least look at it, see if it needs to be repaired and milled and resurfaced. And I feel like we probably, it's not something I don't think should be the, fully the requirement or responsibility of this developer. I think there's three other property owners that should be involved in that. But we are, in our opinion, it, it does need to be done. And we would recommend it be required to be done, I guess.
Yes, sir.
How are y'all?
Please give us your name and address.
I'm Jay Fulmer, uh, two thousand two, Richard Jones Road, Nashville. I'm the civil engineer for the project. And we did, uh, uh, Fulmer Engineering. And so we, uh, we did a, had a geotechnical engineer go and review the state of that road. And I apologize if I failed to send it to you. I thought I had. Um, but it, it identified several things. And so, well, you know, behind the Ascend site, it's in great shape. Nobody ever drove on it 'cause it never got extended. But it needs a bunch of cleanup, vegetation's grown over the curb. That's all up and down it. Uh, there's a big pothole that needs to be repaired, and there's a catch basin that's sort of shifted. And so those are the major issues. And we're hoping the neighbors chip in, but we're gonna fix them. We're not, you know, that's, that's something that the, the project can absorb. And so, uh, there is some alligator cracking and some things that are natural for older roads. We're hoping that we can get the neighbors on board to do a, a general state of repair on those. Uh, but we'll work with staff and do whatever's appropriate. And so we're, you know, we're not contesting any of the suggestions or recommendations. Um, what we're hoping with this new design is when people leave, they've got the opportunity to go down to E nine or they can go back through the site and go back to Nissan. Um, Ascend took over a previous bank's branch, and so they fit in that building. And they're really wanting to adapt this into their prototype. And so that's the purpose of the raise and rebuild. Now, if you've seen the one on Waldron Road in Laverne, this one's a, it, it bumps out ten extra feet. So it's an extra five hundred square feet, but it's, it's the same prototype.
And you don't have any issue? You would like, you want to make that, uh, existing, uh, private road more accessible for your customers anyway?
Oh, of course, of course.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I'm gonna get back on my normal lane. I'm seeing seventy-five ephes, twenty-five brick.
Yep.
I'm just going, we're gonna get back on it. We end up with a bunch of dirty, ugly ephes for long, so. But meets design review, but it's right around, we're starting to see a lot of ugly buildings.
Okay.
Back in my lane.
I'm not near as concerned about you as I was a while ago.
This building does have quite a bit of glass, too, but, uh, they, they're, I've seen in their prototypes.
And it does make design review.
Yes, it does.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
You voted for it.
I did. It meets the design review. Nice-looking building. I just don't like ephes.
I understand.
Okay, moving on. The Villas of Stuartsburg. What we got?
This is the first phase of the second phase that you looked at earlier for the rezoning. Um, this was approved last year and has expired since then. So they are just coming back through again with another site plan, trying to get it approved. Property's current zone PRD sits on four point one four acres. They're proposing for townhomes to be put here, and- They're proposing for townhomes to be put here, and as proposed, the site may be accessed from Old Nashville Highway. Square footage vehicle or use area, 39,797 square feet, uh, which would require landscaping, 3,979 square feet. They're proposing for 12,612 square feet. 76 parking spaces are required. They're showing 105. And they are also showing two handicap spaces as well. Landscape plans submitted by the applicant shows variety of trees and shrubs along the eastern and southern property boundary as part of the existing vegetation. Additional shrubs and trees are shown in landscape islands. Normally, uh, type C buffers required to border R1 properties, which do surround this property towards the, uh, eastern back portion of the property. Architecture elevations show the townhomes to be constructed primarily of brick and hardy board on the front elevations with hardy board on the remaining three sides of these buildings. We have one staff comment regarding the landscape buffer. Like I said, normal circumstances, type C buffer is typically required against R1 districts. The previous site plan approval allowed a white vinyl fence along the northern property boundary in lieu of the landscaping. The developer wishes to utilize that as well as the existing landscaping along the southern and eastern property lines as the required buffer. And Steph would recommend approval with the comment.
My understanding, the fence was something that the neighbor actually requested. Is that the way?
Yes, sir. When this was first rezoned up back in 2007, uh, the, the adjoining neighbor did request, on the north side, did request a fence in lieu of landscaping. Talked with the representative that neighbor earlier today, and they, you know, they would like, they would like a little bit different style than what's shown and would actually request additional height. The zoning was approved with the fencing. I can't recall exactly what was approved. And I went, I didn't have time this afternoon because it was late in the afternoon to see the actual minutes and the actual ordinance that was adopted because it came up on second reading at the council meeting at that time. So, um, all that can be required there is what was, what was approved as part of the minutes.
And the site plan was approved, I assume, are they do it, have they started work as far as sewer and development and all the other stuff? Just how, it's coming here because they have not pulled a?
A building permit.
The building permit, but they've started to work on it, right?
They have started grading and, and, yes, sir.
And everything that's being presented here is just exactly like what was approved a year ago?
Yes, sir.
With the same comments and everything?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it was, it's the same plan and everything. Uh, nothing has really changed. So, yeah, I wanted to bring it to your attention. Like I said, all that can be required really is what was approved. Any conditions? Because there was a condition that was added at the council meeting back in 2007. So, which was a fence. I don't, I don't know if it was height or anything else specified in it or not. I can't recall because it's been 12 years.
The only thing we're going to require is what was required then.
What was required by, at the zoning, yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion? I move to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Next thing on the agenda is zoning ordinance amendment, Enon Springs Gateway Overlay District. Kevin, give us a little short presentation of what we're looking at.
Yeah, yes, sir. This is a zoning ordinance amendment back a few, I guess it was in January of this year, I believe. I had made a presentation to the council at a work session regarding, uh, our vision for the Enon Springs area, uh, going towards, uh, I-24 and with the new roadways being approved. And they asked us to, to draft, uh, something as an overlay district in that area. And so, uh, that's what is before you tonight. This is, I did a little presentation to the council at the, their retreat back in, a few weeks ago. And so this, I just do want to kind of, kind of hit the highlights of that. Just as a reminder, this is the area on the map, and of course, we included that with your package as well. But, um, the area that's being looked at, it's about 640 or 650 acres total.
Is it everything that's colored and?
It's everything that's shown in color on that map, yes, sir. That's the current zoning, uh, of those. Other than there is, has been one, uh, the one rezoning that we did do near, uh, near the schools, those townhomes there, that PRD or that PUD.
Does the overlay include all of the colored section?
Basically, it would include all of the area that's shown in color, yes, sir. That's a mix of C2, R1, and R3, and a little bit of R4, uh, as well as the one PUD that's, uh, that has been changed since this map was done. So that's the area we're talking about. Our current land use plan, uh, kind of has a mix of, the red area shown on that map is commercial, the pink is office, retail, multifamily mix, and the orange is actually a medium density residential. And so it's kind of, that's what we have in our currently adopted plan. Our draft new plan, um, really calls for several areas in town to have a gateway character, and this is one of those areas. And the gateway in this, we have, kind of have 840 gateways and I-24 gateways. This will be one of the I-24 ones. And it kind of be, it was recommended that there be a mix of uses and services. They're both local, regional in scale, hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses would be kind of really be the appropriate type uses that we would be, uh, aiming for in this area. So this, basically all that area, this whole area, it falls into that gateway character area. So it's not a mix of three or four different things. It's really just kind of all one character area that we're looking at. The vision that was discussed back in January in the council kind of went with was that this road, Enon Springs Road West from Old Nashville to I-24 will be a gateway corridor into Smyrna. Uses will be a mix of retail, restaurant, and office with high-end multifamily and strategic locations. Care will be taken to ensure an aesthetically pleasing and pedestrian-friendly environment. Obviously, it's a very broad statement. So the ordinance that's before you would kind of be the, the, how we would implement that vision statement. So, and when I did this, we, we did look at, uh, the Murphysboro Gateway District that they have in the Medical Center Parkway area. This is not a carbon copy of that. Some of the things they did didn't make sense as, for, as much for Smyrna and some of the stuff that they didn't do, I thought we should do. And so there were some things in there. So it's not just a carbon copy, but it is kind of modeled after that, as well as our Lower Street Overlay, um, that we adopted a year or so ago. So, um, one of the things that is different, we would have recommended administering this the same as we do our current design review process. Murphysboro has about a three-step process that you have to go through, um, three separate meetings to the planning commission on every project, and we thought that was a little bit much more than what we thought we needed to do. So it would be really administered the same as how we administer the design review now. It would just have these additional requirements, uh, that staff have to review and make recommendations to you on. This will be applicable to all new development, uh, as, and as is the case with design review and with the Lower Street Overlay, the planning commission can approve deviations, uh, upon request under unique circumstances, as long as it's not contrary to the intent of the overlay. So.
Essentially, this is an enhanced design review and an overlay area that it applies to.
Yes, sir.
And essentially, that's about all it is at this time.
Yes, sir.
Because it doesn't involve any type of zoning. Uh, does it affect uses in any way?
This would not affect use at all. The use would still be a part of the underlying zoning. Murphysboro did do some of that in their gateway. Mr. Peach is not comfortable with that, and I, and I kind of agree with him, but they did, they didn't, they really limited uses more so than, there's certain uses they didn't allow in an area, in that area. And so I, I think the underlying zoning still needs to be where the use is governed. I think I would agree with Mr. Peach on that. So this would not affect the use of the property at all. This would only affect how it develops and depending on what that use is, what the requirements are.
So for whatever we ultimately decide as a zone, whether it's a residential, if it's an R6, R3, C2, C4, those guidelines?
PRD.
This, this, this design review applies to any one of those as we build this out.
What's written here really wouldn't apply to one and two families. So if you had a single-family type development, it really, that would really be something you would probably really just look at as a PRD. This is really multifamily, commercial, industrial. I don't know that we'll see any industrial probably, but if somebody came up with something and we wanted to look at it, it would apply there, too. We did write that into there just in case. You know, but as far as the one, what I've written at this point does not affect the one and two family, not anticipating a lot of one and two family in that area. It could happen certainly, but.
Depending on how far things develop past the roadway there.
Well, and again, I think this would be, yeah, if we ever annex and go west of I-24, I think we would probably take that past, and we might want to look at making some amendments there because thinking about west of I-24, there is some, some vacant property that's being considered to be coming to you all at some point.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly, and that, the development that's being proposed is kind of a commercial, multifamily, single-family mix of stuff. And so, I mean, so you certainly, but I think if we, if we annex that area, to me, we would probably want to, we would take the overlay to west of 24 as well, at least in that immediate area. Similar to what Murphysboro's done with, uh, Fortress Boulevard on the west side of 24 there.
Yeah, Fortress, they, they step it from apartments to townhomes to single-family. I mean, in one neighborhood, you can, yeah, and, yeah, exactly. I mean, you see commercial on the front end.
Yeah.
R6, single-family, and then single-family homes of a million plus. And within a mile distance, a mile and a half distance, Fortress.
Right. So, but see, I saw, like I said, this, what's just written now doesn't really specifically get into one and two family, but that is, we may want to think about that, you know. I know at the retreat, uh, you know, we were asked to take a look at some of that. So, I mean, I think we could, that is something we could incorporate.
So since this is a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, we make a recommendation, and then the council, it goes two readings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's wishes of the commission?
I'm going to make a, I will move that we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. I believe we're ready for bond review?
Yes, sir. We have several, uh, tonight. Villages of Green Tree, Section 2, Phase 1. This is one that's only been in place for a year. Did talk to the developer, Mr. Holloway, and, and he said, well, they'll take care of what's remaining. This is about 93% built out. So several items to be repaired, as well as, uh, the final topping has not been done in that section. We've only had this one a year, um, so we would recommend a one-year extension on that, um, at the same amount. Burton Farms 6, again, this is one we've only had a year. It's only about 32% built. Again, some repairs as well as the topping still needs to be done there. Talked with the developer there, and he did request a one-year extension, and we're okay with the one-year extension on that one. Cedar Hill, Section 1, Phase 1, again, this is another one. We've only had this one one year. Did, I did talk with Mr. Stefan since the packets were delivered, so I have done that now. He did, and he did request an extension. This one's about 65% built, so we would recommend a one-year extension at the same amount. Buckingham Place, Section 1, uh, was not able to talk to the developer there. They are about 94% built. We have had that one two years already, so we would, uh, we would only recommend that one. See the recommendation? Here it is. Yeah, six months. It's on the top of the next page. Six-month extension there. Hidden Hills, Section 4, Phase 4, uh, we would recommend this one go-to maintenance, uh, for one year. Hidden Hills, Section 4, Phase 3, same scenario. Everything is done, other than a few cleanup items. And would, uh, recommend that go to, to maintenance. And then the Legacy, this is the property of Lee Victory there. This is a commercial subdivision. There's five lots. This was approved as a public street. They are in the process of, uh, changing that development and doing some townhomes over there in lieu of the commercial development. And the zoning has been approved to, to do that, uh, and that's what they were looking at doing was their street would actually become private. That hasn't happened yet. It's still a public street. It's still recorded right away, so we still had the bond. They did ask for a one-year extension on that while they finalize everything with the development and to take that to a private street as well. There's some utilities in there as well that they would have to extend in the future, but that would come with the site plan. So we would recommend a one-year extension on that. And that's all that I got.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, please record me not voting or taking part in discussion. You all be left out of the Franklin synergy. So, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Four with two not participating. That's why I asked. Okay, anything else?
Oh, the other thing, I did send an email, actually a couple of emails to you. The comprehensive plan, the steering committee meeting, we had tentatively, we had said it was one for May 9th. We were, had several people, so we had several council members who were not going to be able to be there. So we did reschedule that for May 23rd, uh, at 6 o'clock.
And then there's a road meeting on the 30th?
It'll be the council workshop late night.
Yeah, that would be the 30th.
30th.
The 30th.
At 4:00.
At 4:00.
For, for discussing the roads. Anything else?
It's our quarterly update.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? You'll send us a reminder.
I will.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. Good meeting.